We'll call the meeting to order. Start with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kurt, go to roll, please.
Edie?
Here.
Rosette?
Here.
Crouch?
Here.
Scarborough?
Here.
Mayor Lansford? Here. Before we move to the agenda, I'd like to see a show of hands of how many people here tonight intend to address the council at the podium. One, two, three, four. Okay. Then we'll just keep the agenda as the same.
You're the only change to the order. The agenda is if there's a numbering error of the pack, items, city official comments in a German should be items 14 to 15. But this otherwise order, the agenda is unchanged.
Have they retained motion to approve the agenda? If those changes... So, second. Kurt, go to roll, please.
Edie?
Aye.
Rosette?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Mayor Lansford?
Aye. Then we'll move to the public comment. Would ask anybody that wants to address us then step to podium, state your name. There is a three-minute timeframe, and I'm going to ask the legal counsel to keep track and see if we have a 30-second notice when the time is running for us. So, do everyone's go first, please step up.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lori Gani. I am a Democratic committee person for Streeter Eagle One District. And I come here today on multiple purposes. First of which, the comments that I've heard from the people in my district is that we do not want a cut in the full-time employees, the full-time service employees that serve this area. There is another solution out there, we have to find it, and we have to be open to looking for that. And as that, we are going to shoot ourselves in the foot if we start cutting our services. We have a very diverse population. We have older people that are desperately in need of those services and an emergency and cannot wait that extra two to three or four even minutes for part-time volunteer officers to get there or firemen to get there. We need full-time, we need the regular services that we currently have. And if that means we have to tighten our belts or to find other methods to do so, to pay for those services, that's what we have to do. But cutting them is just not an option.
That's right.
I live at 206 West South Street, and I'm here also to comment a little bit on the current, not on the agenda, but on the current issues that our community faces. And I wanted to talk a little bit about what has happened in the recent past in career path jobs that have been lost in our community. HSHS, as we know, chipped and chipped and chipped away at services available by the hospital to the point that it was closed, and there was nothing we could do about it. But they had reduced services to such a level that they could justify closing the hospital. We don't know how many career path jobs were lost there, but plenty, nurses, doctors, entomologists, whatever else to do. We lost career path jobs when Sherman School closed, when Oakland School closed. Teachers were lost, teachers aides were lost, or people who worked as career jobs, those were gone. We have outsourced some of our municipal jobs. Our building inspector is paid for by our tax dollars, but is not a Streeter resident nor employed by the city. I'm assuming that those are independent contractors, I don't know that for a fact, but I wonder why we don't have an independent contractor for that position. They wouldn't be on the municipal payroll if somehow we managed to do it out of the city. Why can't we do it in the city? We've had job growth in Streeter, but they're not equal. We got Big R, we have Walmart, we're getting Baskin Robbins and the Dunkin' Donuts on results. It's growing, but those are minimum wage entry level, they're not career path jobs. As we know, our population is decreasing, but we need to, I think, as a community, look at how we're going to increase that population. We have people who graduate from our high school every year, a number of them go to college, many of them pursue degrees, master's degrees, graduate degrees. What are we doing to bring those people back? I think that reducing our police force and our firefighters in the future is just reducing our career path jobs yet again. Just recently, there was in the paper, and you've already talked about crime and levels of crime in Streeter as compared to other communities, so I'm not going to talk about that again, but I will bring out some statistics that were just in the paper last week. Our police received 1,238 calls. That equals 41 calls per day. That's two calls per hour, one every 30 minutes. We have three officers on a shift and minimum staffing. 30 seconds. We'll keep going. We need to look at some of the things I think we have that are revenue generating. I agree, we need to find ways to raise money rather than continue to look at cutting funds. We have a city park, we have a plum pavilion on there, we built it, we said they will come, they're not coming. We could change our ordinances, put 5,000 people in that park, purchase tickets, have concerts, charge $25 a ticket for someone to come and be in a confined area. That would generate $125,000 each time. Do it five times a year, it's $1,250,000. That's gross. I'm sure there's expenses there, but I mean, those places we can generate funds. The same thing with James Street Recreation. Seats are empty. If Billy Joel can play at Ridley Field, can't we get him in our parks? I have more.
Good evening. My name's Lucas Christensen. I'm a resident of Streeter and also a proud union laborer. I want to express concern about the cuts to the police and fire department on top of Ms. Pettit's comments. We're actually looking to expand the population of Streeter, which those 1,241 calls could probably be 1,541. So that's even more territory, that's more residents, that's more sets of problems for not just public safety, but also the fire department. Many towns have an ambulance service which is contracted through the city, through the fire department, and they receive money for those calls. Maybe you should ask your elect officials how much money they received for the over 1,200 calls last year that the fire department responded to. It's $0. There's a half a million dollar fire truck, there's four firefighters, that's pensions, salaries, fuel, maintenance. We receive no dollars. But why? Because AMT is a contractor and it's easy way out. If you look at that map over there, that blue area, is the proposed annexation of all those residents to the city of Streeter. That area, I know personally, I worked over there, did construction, it's a lot of elderly people, there's many calls in that area. So, when you think that the population's declining, hopefully it's going to increase. Thank you.
I live at 810 North Watson. We have a pretty large contingent of citizens in Streeter that are not in favor of cutting our public services. We have a pretty serious rash of crime in this town. Three police officers, as it is now, is nowhere near enough to cover this town. Instead of cutting services, we should be looking at improving services. We have a lot of elderly people, a lot of medical emergencies. Why are we not running our own ambulance service? Why is AMT walking away with all the money from this and we get nothing when we have people that are fully capable of handling these calls and do handle the first response on these calls? It's just appalling. I think we need to look at every possible option that there is, and I'd also like to know why Councilman Scarborough's half-cent sales tax was never seriously looked at, and why are we on the path where cuts look like they're the only solution? Why is that message being sent out there by the city of Streeter? That's the questions we have. Thank you.
My name is Dan Snow, and I live in the 1,300 block of East Lundey Street. And all summer, I wondered what in the hell are them saying, trucks coming down out of Creek Street for, going both ways. Couple weeks ago, I followed one Casey's, followed it to my street, and it just kept going. So I know it was loaded, my next stop was the police department. Came here, the chief was coming outside, it was raining, we talked, he talked to the city engineer. What is the designated route for those trucks? It's 23 to 12th Street to Smithup's Road, coming and going. He said, take pictures, get the truck numbers, the DOTs. I've done it, still have them, but it's not my job to fix the problem. It's you guys. You have to write the laws because supposedly, out of Creek is a truck route, but it's not the designated truck route that was laid out for these trucks coming and going. So you need to put an ordinance or something that says, no trucks from them to that facility should be going on that street. They're just going to tear that road up, and it took 25 years to get it fixed like it is. So I just want to know what you're going to do about fixing the problem? Because they're running it night and day, over 100 trucks a day, a majority come and go off that road, not the way they're supposed to. Put money into the road on 12th Street this summer to fix it up? You got enough money to fix this one up? Because they're going to tear it up for you really quick. Just want to know what you're going to do.
Anyone else? Nope, you know we do it one time.
I was just going to add one quick comment.
Nope. Scott, you want to... Then we'll move into the agenda. Item one.
Mayor, if you need to move. It's up to you. I think we're done. Mayor and council, this topic that many of the people who've come here this evening to talk about is not on your agenda tonight. There's no action item relating to this, but given the number of people that are here and probably there's some misinformation behind it, perhaps some response is appropriate. I think, as I understand it from the council, this starts with presumption that property taxes in Streeter are too high, that local property taxpayers need relief from what are the highest property taxes in the South County. Streeter's property taxes are not only the highest in the South County, but the second and third highest cities, with each have to increase their rates by 30% to equal Streeter's. High property tax rates are an impediment to economic development because they make it hard to sell property, and they contribute to neighborhood decline because if owners spend a disproportionate amount on taxes, they have no money left for repairs and maintenance, and we see that in some of our neighborhoods. So the city council, for the last four years, has decided that property tax increases will not be used, not be used, to address the structural deficit in the general fund, which we predict will approach $500,000 after 2020. This slide on the screen up here, sorry, this one behind me isn't working, identifies that by the year 2020, that there'll be a permanent structural deficit, a $500,000 a year gap between expenditures and revenues. It is true, as one of the folks here in the audience said today, that the approach to that isn't just with cuts. There are some new revenues to be examined, and you have done that. They take a while to develop. You've discussed them with regard to possible uses of this metaglycide, energy aggregation, and some other things. But the solution will have to be a combination of cost reductions as well as new revenues. Pensions are not the only reason for the general fund deficit, but it is a major reason, and the growth in pensions, insurance, and workers' compensation, all personnel costs are the major factor because 70% of the general fund is spent on personnel. Pension benefits are controlled by the state, which has shown no willingness to tackle this very tough issue. In fact, it is the single greatest financial threat to Illinois' solvency, but complacency and lack of will by the state's leadership cannot keep local governments and city councils from dealing with the problem. The mayor and the council, to me, mayor and council, we predict that pensions are going to take up 60% of the property tax levy for the city of Streeter that you will have to adopt this fall, in December of 2018, for taxes payable in 2019. 60% seems like a lot. Peoria is already at 85% of their tax levy going for pensions. Springfield passed 95%. Nationwide state local pensions are a $3 to $4 trillion black hole, the equivalent of the economy of Japan, according to the Wall Street Journal. In Streeter, what that really means, those are numbers that don't mean anything, this is what it means in Streeter. The green line at the top shows the tax levy in total dollars, not the levy as a rate, but in total dollars since 2006. And except for a slight decline between 2010 and 2011, it was going regularly upward until 2014. The red circle there, upper right-hand side, shows the decline that you deliberately made in property taxes to try to bring it down. And since 2014, you've dropped the property taxes by about 7%. The blue color is the amount of the Streeter pension, excuse me, the Streeter tax levy that goes to pay for pensions, and the gold is the rest of property taxes that go for all the other general fund functions. We expect that the blue is going to jerk up in this fall if the pension report back from Foster and Foster. So your desire, green line, is to bring the taxes down for citizens while the pension is going up, leaving very little in the gold left for all the other general fund functions. The state Supreme Court has ruled that existing retirees and existing employees cannot have their pension benefits reduced, and the city of Streeter accepts this ruling and has never sought any reduction in any current employee's or current retiree's pension. The only thing cities have control over regarding pensions is the amount of the pensionable base and the number of people who enter these pension systems. In other words, there's only two things we can do. We can try to stop the various ways that the ending base salary is inflated to determine ending salary pension calculations, as IMRF has already done. And second, we can try to do things that reduce the number of people entering these full-time pension systems by mixing and combining part-time and full-time staffing. That puts fewer people into these expensive pension systems and will save money in the future, although no current employees will see any reduction in their benefits. Every time the city hires a new full-time police officer or firefighter, the taxpayers assume a pension liability on day one of $1.5 to $2 million. The combined annual cost of pensions, insurance, and workers' compensation for full-time police and firefighters is between $50,000 and $60,000 a year before we pay the first dollar of salary. This situation is not the fault of our local public safety employees. We're not trying to blame them, it's the fault of a flawed system created by the state of Illinois 25 years ago, largely at the behest of special interest groups. But taxpayers can no longer afford it, so we need to have a different solution. There's been some, I think, incorrect information distributed locally about the city's proposals, so let me try to summarize what has actually been proposed. Under the city's proposals, not a single existing police or firefighter loses their jobs. Proposed changes will be made only through attrition and normal turnover. Streeter firefighters and police officers are fairly compensated, both in terms of their salary and of their benefits. No significant changes are proposed to any existing salary and benefit packages which the city council believes are already fairly generous. Of course, whether or not our salary and benefits are fair or generous or not is something the city citizens can make a decision on their own about, and so we have information here about our salary and benefits for those departments. We had them on our website, you can pick them up here tonight if you like, and they'll be available at the front counter from tomorrow. The police department currently has a requirement, as was said earlier this evening, that no police shift will have less than three sworn police officers. Now, depending on vacations and sick leave and paid personal days, paid holidays and other paid leaves that police officers have in their contract, a police shift may have three, four, or five, and in some rare cases, six officers on duty. But in no circumstances, based on what you're evaluating, will manning fall below three. That's the current minimum manning, it stays the current minimum manning, even if it requires calling in off-duty officers and paying them overtime. This minimum staffing threshold will not change. Streeter needs this minimum level of coverage. Above this coverage level, however, we can supplement with CSOs or part-time officers as more than half of Illinois cities between 10,000 and 20,000 population already do. It makes really no sense to deploy a police officer who makes more than $40 an hour to review surveillance video or help someone put in a child seat or help citizens with a vehicle lockout or gather information for minor accident reports. If these secondary tasks, which don't have to be performed by a certified police officer carrying a firearm with arrest powers, can be performed instead by a trained community service officer, CSO, then the city can actually have more eyes on the street rather than less. The CSOs will cost less because they won't be a part of those public pension systems, their workers' compensation costs will be less, and those that are part-time will not require group insurance. This will require the full-time, this will allow the full-time sworn police officers to concentrate on public safety and crime prevention that only they can do. The selective use of part-time sworn officers to backfill for officers temporarily assigned to school resource officer posts or deployed overseas has already been authorized and approved by the city council. The fire department currently has a four-man minimum manning requirement, not three like the police, even though fire department call volume is lower than the police. The shift manning requirement is a product of previous collective bargaining agreements, I won't go into all those details, but it's pegged to the departments also performing certain code enforcement duties, but not all code enforcement. In other words, if the code enforcement duties currently assigned to the fire department are transferred to another department, the department's four-man minimum manning requirement goes away. So the city has proposed to transfer and combine all code enforcement duties into the community development department. As required by law, the city has given notification to the union of its intentions in this matter. The city originally proposed to augment full-time fire department staffing with trained and certified part-timers, but special interest legislation enacted in 2008 says that the use of trained part-time firefighters requires the permission of the local fire union, and as you know, the local fire union has not given that permission. So while it is less efficient, we have determined that trained CSOs can also provide lift assistance, help install smoke detectors, perform all sorts of code inspections, minor first aid, and other various tasks that are not related to fire suppression. Our review of other Illinois fire departments reveals that an overwhelming number of them use part-time, mixed, or combined full-time and part-time staffing. Currently, I mean, certainly cost is one of the main reasons for that, but it can also contribute to improved ISO ratings. ISO does not care how many full-time firefighters the city employs when they make their analysis. They want to know how many people who are trained to put out a fire can be deployed to a scene in the shortest possible time. It doesn't matter if it's achieved with a mixture of full-time and part-time staff. For example, the Romeo Fire Department, Romeoville Fire Department, has six full-time per shift and eight part-time per shift. The Batavia Fire Department has an equal number of full-time and part-time. Village of Chicago Ridge is staffed with three captains, three lieutenants, seven full-time, and 19 part-time firefighters. Midlothian has a combination of 16 full-time and 16 part-time. Urbanae has 12 part-time firefighters, three full-time contractual firefighters, 18 paid-on-call. Roselle has a combination of contracted and part-time and full-time personnel, and they actually have their public works employees trained as firefighters to augment staffing. Oak Forest Fire Department has 24 full-time sworn personnel and 21 part-time personnel. Northbrook, with a population of 33,000 and 16 square miles, twice the size of Streeter, uses a mixed combination staff with 24 part-time officers in various positions, and they have an ISO rating of one. If implemented properly and carefully, Mayor and Council, transitioning to mixed combined staffing is a great example of doing more with less. In the aggregate, it costs less, and it can put more feet and more eyes on the street to solve problems for citizens. This strategy, or some version of it that you would eventually determine, will help bring taxes down, and lower taxes will help contribute to the revitalization of Streeter. As council members, you have directed staff to do more with less, and so, and this is what already overburdened taxpayers want. That concludes my presentation.
Mayor and council, item one is an ordinance that provides for parking enforcement on
Bluff Street between Van Buren and Loudon Street. This street was entirely reconstructed this year, and so, actually, the center line is not in the center, it needs to be centered, it needs to the south side of the street with the several bumpouts on that section of street is where the parking needs to be. So our plan is to mark those parking spots on the south side and then have a center line for the other two lanes of traffic, which means there'll be no parking on the north side of Bluff Street for that entire section. But to enforce that requires an ordinance, there is no ordinance in effect that pertains to that section of West Bluff Street, so it is requested that this ordinance be approved.
Have they retained motion to pass an ordinance to regulate parking on the section of West Bluff Street? Who moved, Your Honor? Second. Any discussion? Kurt, go to roll, please.
Edie?
I have discussion.
Yes.
I just want to leave, send out a notice on this one for that neighborhood.
We did not.
I just wonder if we should, before we take action on it?
I know that the city engineer and his staff, you know, talked to most of these owners and told them, you know, what it was going to be, but there wasn't a systematic letter done. So if you'd like, if you approve the ordinance, we could send that out before the public works department actually goes in.
I drove along that street. Cars were parked on the south side. There's one car parked on the north side. There's a car coming from the west going east, and there's only room for that one either. So if there is not restricting parking on there, you're going to constantly have something going on. I don't think we've had any opposition from anybody there since this has been published and entered. Can't we have any opposition?
No, but Councilman Edie is correct that they haven't sent out a letter to everybody, even though I'm relatively certain that the city engineer did attend this staff, talk to people, because they were out there every day during the construction, because people asked how this was going to work out. But it was designed to have parking regulations this way, so we can certainly send out a letter telling everybody so that they don't get surprised and get a ticket without knowing.
I just would like to just give that formal notice, so they know.
To maybe fire chief would be involved? I mean, getting emergency vehicles over there. An emergency vehicle would not have made it through.
Right. That there cannot be parking on the north side, and once it's signed that way and lined that way, then I think it'll be clear to everybody. So I recommend that you pass it, but we won't actually enforce it until we get a letter out. It's going to take us that long to do the designing and the striking anyway.
There's that. We'll show you a sec. Then do you send the letter out? Kurt, go to roll, please.
Edie?
Aye.
Rosette?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Item two.
Mayor Council, the map underneath the screen over here on the south side of the council chambers is a map of the proposed Route 18 East tax increment financing district. And most of the properties that make up that area are in the city. There's a few that, there's two that remain to be annexed, and this is one of them. It's actually a residential parcel immediately to the east of Central Church of Christ on the south side of Highway 18, and so this ordinance will annex that property in the city.
Entertainer motion to pass an ordinance to approve annexing certain territory in Otter Creek Township to the city of Streeter.
So move.
For second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Court, roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. Item three.
Item three and four are really the same item, and I request that you pass a motion to receive and file the report, and then we can talk about the specifics of the resolution for this facade grant.
Entertainer motion to place on the Plan Commission's recommendation, place and file the Plan Commission's recommendation 2018-09 to approve and award a facade grant to Richard Houghine's owner, 110 North Monroe Street, in the amount of $15,000.
So move.
For second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Court, roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item four, now request a motion to award a facade grant to Richard Houghine's owner, 110 North Monroe Street, in the amount of $15,000. So move. For second.
Second. Just an additional background, it's not technically correct, as the engineer had on here, that this is a 45% of project, eligible for project costs. $33,000 is the total that the owner has estimated for the facade work he's going to do on the east side that faces Monroe Street across from the Wells Fargo Building, but also the improvement that he's proposed to make on the south side that faces Heritage Park. But the portion that faces Heritage Park is not eligible for the facade grant, only the facade is, faces the street. That's your council policy. The portion that is just in the front of the building is still going to meet, I mean 80% of that still meets $15,000, but we will only reimburse 80% of the front piece. He's paying for the portion, and he's hiring the same artist that did the mural, the large mural on Heritage Park.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I had a call tonight about the painting itself. Was not impressed, thought the painting itself was, I'm not sure how to put this, too risque, I guess. With beer and a lady on it. If you want to know who looks at the program, come down to us at the.
The Land Commission serves as your architectural award, but if any aspect of the proposal is, despite the Land Commission's recommendation, if any aspect of the proposal is not to your liking, you can table it and ask the owner to make whatever modifications you want. It's your facade program.
The only one I've heard from anybody else, but also, on the front, to look at, the front of the building, nothing's being done to the lower half of the front of the building. It's right now the plywood painted. I'm not sure how we could ever get somebody to do more, go to another grant, another year or two. We have given out more than one grant.
Yes.
But originally, these grants were for the front facades or if you're on a corner of the site.
And some buildings, the owner has said, I want to do this part as a phase one and another as a phase two later on. He did not do that, but then you can either approve it or you could ask for additional clarification about his intention for modifications to what he wants to do.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item five.
Mayor Council, the current year budget anticipates the replacement of two squad cars in the Police Department. You have a memo here from Chief Pastrick with more of the details about that. Chief, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, thank you, Stet. Mayor and Council, during fiscal year 2018, you approved the budget, and in that budget an amount was a line item to approve and purchase two squad cars. We're requesting that bill take place at this time. That'll be done through Laurel Brothers, which is part of the state bid pricing. That's the lowest pricing we can get. And you can see at the bottom of your memo what the total cost will be, and there is still enough money in that budget line item for this purchase. Starboard will take on the transport of these vehicles from Laurel Brothers to Streeter for a cost of $400. Do you have any further questions? I'm happy to answer.
Is that for both vehicles?
For both, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Court, roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item six.
Mayor Council, you have been pretty aggressive over the years at trying to get dozen or more derelict or abandoned homes demolished so that they don't create a drag on the property values in certain neighborhoods around the city. We've been fortunate to get three grants from the state to help with the cost of that. What we have here is, we were trying to get seven structures demolished, which have already been identified and already approved through the process we have to go through, which is lengthy, and so we took bids on them. Only one of the bidders bid on all of the structures. One of the other bidders only bid on some of them, and so it's requested that to Offerman Construction, who bid on all three of them, be awarded the bid. As I said, I've got a bid pregnant, and they gave them offerment because he bid on seven.
Offerment on all seven.
Right. He's the contractor that did all the sewer work and crap he needed. Sorry, that's Jensen Yopperman did the sewer on Highway 23, sorry.
Entertainer motion to approve and authorize the city manager to proceed with a bid award to Offerman Construction Company, Pontiac Holloway, in conjunction with the city of Streeter 2018 demolition project.
Second.
And he is going to try to work with the other bidder for those three. Any other comments, questions?
Court, roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item seven.
It's already been announced, Mayor, that the Villas of Hollybrook plans to make a $9 million investment on a 37-acre tract of land on east Highway 18, and several months ago, they communicated to the city council that they would do that only if you created this Route 18 East TIP district, which you agreed to do. And earlier this month, we had the joint review board meeting, and so there'll be a final public hearing in early September, which the final council rule anticipated on the 19th of September. The developer is anxious to get started and wants to begin construction this fall, and so they have asked that you approve this resolution, which authorizes incurring costs that is eligible for TIP reimbursement as of tonight, rather than at the time that the TIP is finally adopted by you on the 19th of September. We are anxious to get them started with this important development on the east side, and so that's why the resolution is recommended to be approved.
Entertainer motion to approve and authorize a resolution that sets the date expenses incurred by the Villas of Hollybrook, the developer.
Motion.
I'll make a motion.
For second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Court, roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item eight.
At its last meeting, the Streeter Park Board made a recommendation after some study about how to improve the layout and the appearance, mostly through updating, of Central Park. That's the one square block park over on the east side of the city, south of Sherman's School. And so they've made this recommendation to you. It is not likely that all of these improvements will happen in the next fiscal year, because it certainly depends on the availability of limited budgeted funds. But one of the reasons why you wanted to have a recommendation from the Park Board is because the Chinese who now own the Sherman's School have indicated a desire to participate in the improvement of the park, and so we wanted to have an up-to-date plan approved by you so that certain items, like the curb and gutter, the lighting, whatever they would elect, could be paid for by them, and hopefully we'll figure this out during the next eight months or so. But they plan to build a dormitory on that vacant block to the east of Indiana Street, and if some parts of the construction here could be rolled into that contract because of their willingness to do that, we'll negotiate with them about that. But this was the first step, is to have an improved development.
Entertainer motion to place and file a recommendation from the Streeter Park and Open Spaces Board to approve the Central Park plan.
So move.
For second.
Any discussion? Court, roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item nine.
The city's road plan, capital improvement plan for streets this year is finished except for work on West Stanton Street from Van Buren all the way to the west end, Ridge Road, Sylvan Lane, a few other small pieces where we're doing Cape Seal work. That's funded from motor fuel tax, which is restricted revenue that can only be used on the streets. The state requires resolutions that specify each project has a requirement of MFT, and so we're asking that you approve an MFT resolution to do what you've already authorized in your budget.
Entertainer motion to approve and authorize the appropriation of 75,000 of MFT funds in connection with roadway maintenance projects for fiscal year 2018 by the city of Streeter under provisions of the LA Highway Code.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Any other discussion? Court, roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item ten.
Item ten relates to the strip mall development up on at the corner of Marilla Park Road and North Bloomington Street where the Baskin Robbins Dunkin' Donuts is going to be built. They have preliminary approval for the entrance off of Highway 23 at the southwest extreme corner of their property. I think you've all got a copy of this, right? It wasn't in the initial packet, but I think Patty got it to you. So because it's on a state highway, the state requires your approval of this resolution for them to get their final permit.
Entertainer motion to approve and permit entrance from Illinois Route 23 to North Bloomington Street at 2404 North Bloomington Street.
So move.
For second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I do, Your Honor.
Okay.
This would be a permanent, not a construction access on 23.
That's correct.
And it would be in or out?
Yes.
And they've signed off.
Yeah, they.
To me, it seems like it's such a dangerous place to put an access. I mean, that's, we have a lot of problems already at the intersection. Will there be a turn lane or any type of easement or? Can we write off?
There is no decel lane.
Have we always done that in the past?
Well, the state has a standard, I'm not sure the exact number. They want entrances like that to be as far from the intersection as possible to avoid the kind of conflicts that you'd have if it's too close to the intersection, which is why the developer has put it on the off-road park road, on the extreme east side, and on Bloomington on the extreme south side. It's the only way that he can make the circulation pattern for the drive-up window that's on the north side of the building. But it meets high-down specs, yes. But there is no separate decel lane for that entrance.
It just seems dangerous when I was looking at it. I go about the.
Any other comments, questions?
I don't know. Just you can only go in and out northbound.
Yes.
Because of my need in the light.
Yeah. Needing right turn.
That's correct.
Court, roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item eleven.
Streeter ordinance requires council approval for blocking off a street for block parties, and that's been requested up at Old Orchard Lane for September 8. Simple motion is all that's required.
Entertainer motion to approve blocking off Old Orchard Lane and Meadow Lane on September the 8th, 2018 for a block park.
So move.
For second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Court, roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Mayor Council, this is another annexation in the same area of Route 18 East TIP district
as we have the other annexation. This property, we would all know as Wolfson's United High Supply Building is on the north side of East Main Street, just east of Bullard. Proposed to be annexed so that it's in the TIP.
Entertainer motion to pass an ordinance to approve annexing certain territory in Otter Creek Township to the city of Streeter.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Court, roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item thirteen, consent agenda, request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilman Crouch abstaining from Section C, and Councilman Scarborough abstaining from Section B.
So move.
For second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, the staff gave you an addendum to the fund warrants list. It includes some fairly large distributions to the Streeter Public Library, the Streeter Police Pension Fund, and the Streeter Fire Pension Fund. Those are distributions from the current tax receipts from the South County, that's what they are. So we got the tax from them, and we turned it over in Centerville, but it still runs through your fund warrants.
Any other question? Court, roll please.
Beadie.
Aye.
Rosack.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item.
No, I just wanted to thank everybody for attending tonight. A lot of nights, there's five, six people in the crowd, so it's nice to actually see a bunch of people from the community come out tonight, so thank you.
She took my thunder. Thank you for coming. I mean, you care, and that's all we can ask of you. Please, keep doing it.
Couple of quick things. Mr. Brandon is in the audience, and he had to drive here through Lane Genske Court. I've asked him before to look at it. Maybe we could put that in the minutes or at least notes that.
There's a section of Genske Court, and you first enter off Boyce Street, that on the west side, it always pawns effectively.
I had another couple of questions. The first one was Jensen, is that what you said, the property?
I misspoke when I said it was old Offerman who we gave the contract to, and I misspoke and said that that was who did the crafting property. It was in fact, it was the senior project.
It's on the corner. Is there a resolution or a date? Because there are just don't be, there's steel there, there's more, there's things being, it's being used. I mean, it's truly a nice store. I've had a lot of people complain. I had another couple of questions. The first one was Jensen, is that what you said? The property?
I misspoke when I said it was Offerman who we gave the contract to, and I misspoke and said that that was who did the craft and property. It was back, it was Jensen's project.
The craft and property, it's on the corner.
Yes.
Is there a resolution or a date? Because there are just, there's steel there, there's more, there's things being, it's being used. I mean, it's truly a nice store. I've had a lot of people complain. I mean, is there a limit, a date where the project can be completed? Because he's using it to haul things as a, basically a stop. I don't know if there was a resolution date.
When he purchased it from the city, Council of Scarborough, he made clearly a plan to use it as a material storage yard, and understanding that that would be potentially unsightly, we required that he put up a sightbreak fence, which he has not done, obviously. So to be honest with you, I don't recall what the deadline was for having that fence up, but I think that's what we need to report.
I think so, too. There's battle with all kinds. And then I wrote this, and I'd just like to read it. And it said, "First and foremost, I would like to thank you all for coming tonight. I wrote some of this the other day, not knowing what would happen tonight. The one thing I did know is that when you put a lot of caring and passionate people together, you begin to better understand the pros and cons to each side must deal with, which each side must deal with. What is bad is I said side. Why are there always sides? Why can't it be all of us? The problem the city has in front of it did not just happen overnight. Since I joined the council, I presented several ideas on how to financially help the city catch up. The issue at hand is cutting services. We can cut services, but without additional revenue, we'll be back here a few years dealing with this problem again. I ask everyone not to rush into any decisions, and I ask, please, look at all and any options available to us. By putting revenue above life and safety of our citizens, should not be rushed. Every option needs to be further reviewed before any changes are put on the agenda. Our citizens deserve better." And what I'd like to add to that, since listening tonight, Scott said foster and foster. Are we, is that still not here?
It's still not back.
So we're making decisions, again, on information we definitely need. On the pension issue, there was said about volunteers and so forth, and I'm not here to argue with that, but I believe the actual rate is three to one, volunteers equal firemen full-time, and that's something that needs to be considered as well. And something else that's never been talked about is tier two and the impact it will have and with the foster and foster. There's nothing against, I love all the retirees, but they're not going to live forever. And you know, there's always been ebbs and flows in the pension. And you know, I understand what Scott is saying, and I agree with that to a point, but my point is such that I've asked for sales tax, and I understand tax, 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 but that would help, and it would reduce the tax levy. I've asked to borrow the money, and I don't think that is a bad idea either, because again, there's a great chance, and I've had other city managers tell me that there's a good chance you could make a lot of money. It's free money, we should be using. Again, we've heard the MS issue tonight, and you look at City Alton, they made $400,000 already, they put into their pension fund this year, and they're buying their third ambulance. So there's opportunities, and I understand what Scott is saying about, you know, at some point, but even if there's cuts, if we don't have more revenue, I sit here today and I guarantee you it's going to be on your property taxes. Because if, when we exhaust all our other sales tax and everything, there's only so many places to go. So it's my proposal, or I bet this council, maybe we even need to schedule another committee of a whole session where we can put all these, work together on all these issues, to just not rushing anything, and let's see where we can get, you know, together in the group and talk about not only cuts, if that's the only discussion, but revenue. That would be something I would like to see in the future. And again, thank you all for coming. This is wonderful.
Any other questions?
Once again, thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight. We appreciate the feedback that we've gotten, and first and foremost, I would like to thank the city. The Streeter Police and Fire Departments, as they both do a great job for the citizens of Streeter. As to my recent Facebook post, I have sat back for upwards of the last eight months and listened as we've been belittled and degraded, called spineless cowards, idiots, and morons, just to name a few. There's been a lot of disrespectful comments towards volunteer fire department, volunteer firemen and part-timers, not qualified, not properly trained. These men and women are required to go through many hours of training to become public servants. I personally feel these are all distractions of the real issues we are faced with, overinflated pension costs. Just before my Facebook post, I had read an article in the Times paper, the fire union filed unfair labor act against the city, which I seen as another distraction. My Facebook post was on my personal page. I didn't take, it didn't take long to be seen by hundreds of people. I did not call anyone names. I stand behind my comment. There are people who agree and people who disagree. The citizens of this town know what type of work you do for this community. I strongly believe the current proposal set forth by the city council is the best option we could come up with, being fair to the union and to the taxpayer. We are not cutting any jobs. This will all take place through attrition. This pension crisis is not just at the local level, it is a statewide problem, and the private sectors are taking more radical approaches. One local example is the Plumente Corporation, where 18 people were permanently laid off, at least 10 people had 20 years, four others had 30 years, and one almost 40 years. And after this fiscal year, they will not contribute to the union's pensions, and they have been hiring new employees and are adding a second shift. We are not looking to take this extreme approach with our fire union. I feel that our current proposal is fair to both sides, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Now, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. It's nice to see the turnout. It's nice to see the citizens taking interest in the community. Each of us up here on this, around here on the guys, has a vote. Any decision that's gonna be made, that's gonna commit the city to anything, is decided here and only here by the council. Wonder if we have something. The items that are on the agenda tonight for action, that's the items when we discuss those at what we refer to as a council meeting, a council of the whole meeting, and as Joe indicated, that, his recommendations. And those types of things are what we do discuss at that point in time, and if there's citizens that attend that, it also gives us an opportunity at that point in time to interact and ask questions of the individuals and see what they may have, you know, that either a suggestion, hopefully. People usually have a lot of things that they think should be, but not always do they have the same information. But if you're there, when these exchanges take place, you may have a better idea of the complexity of the issues and everything else. But if we get a consensus at that point in time with the individuals that are there, which is the council, then we say that that's something that needs to be put on the agenda for the next council meeting, scheduled council meeting, and that's where the action then is taken. And the decisions are not decided in the media, it's not decided by anyplace else, but here at the council meetings. So with that, thank you all, and then I would entertain the motion, Your Honor. So move. Second.